You want Ford, Dave?
Dave.
Lower prices.
They lower their prices?
Okay, Ford.
Dave.
GM will follow suit soon.
Six P M. We'll call this regular village board meeting no order. If you'd all please join me in a moment's silence. The political allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just take your own.
Trustee Nice.
Present.
Trustee Try. Here. Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gurgur. Trustee Fletcher.
Present.
Village President Kimsey.
Present.
Are there any public announcements this evening?
Actually, for less.
We were waiting.
American Legion and the VFW. So, all I have right now are the fish fries. And we have two more coming up on Friday. And we do offer the fish fries on the Good Friday, which is the seventeenth. And a lot of places don't offer the fish fries on Good Friday, but we do.
Could you go into a little detail on what type of fish you serve and stuff like that?
It's haddock, and it's fried in the best oil there is.
Coated. The best oil.
Yeah.
Now, Kijin.
What size do you have?
Kijin.
What size do you have?
You have fries, and you have potatoes. I'm just telling you, we spend a lot of fish.
If everybody's curious, our first presenter forgot about traffic.
That's like vanilla cake. Okay.
He said six fifteen if the chat and cops don't stop things, so. Well, mine's the forces here now. All right. Are there any public comments on agenda topics? You're none. We have no own business. I'm assuming that the FGM team doesn't want to start without Josh.
No.
Yeah, we're waiting for Josh.
We'll wait for Josh. All right, so we'll hold off on that for the moment. Out of number one, under new business is resolution approving the contract with the internal or police. And I motion to bring this to the floor.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll stick it.
Second by trustee Ferguson. Any discussion? I do want to say that we certainly appreciate the way that this contract was approached. I think very thoughtful and very considerate. So, our thanks to the FOP on a pleasant and easy negotiation to get through it. And I really appreciate people that understand what we're trying to do while we understand what they would like to do. So, trusting, speaking of traffic, trustee Gurgur is tied up in traffic at the end of committee hearings caused at the State House. But he did want to make a point to say that had he been here, he's fully supported this contract as well, too. So, that was important to him, so we make sure that's.
Our staff did a really, really good job negotiating. Spent a lot of time, a lot of effort to it. Worked back and forth with the police, so.
You're proud of them.
And Lisa, she took over chicken scratching. Put it all down into where it made sense, so.
Somebody called Winwin.
There you go.
Get them.
All right. Any further discussion? Just clear.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Try.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Item two is an ordinance increasing the teacher licenses. Can I motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll bring the motion.
Trustee Nice made a motion. Second by trustee Fletcher. This is in reference to the Jack Flash, who their representatives are. I'm here this evening. I've hardly even given a hear their presentation. But nobody has any questions in the discussion?
Um, yeah, I do have a follow-up because I did get a phone call from them. We did check. Can you guys talk a little bit more about how you guys get back to community? I really like for it because I'm not sure how much that went into it. You guys can pump your mind.
Don't let them off the hook. You did a fine job. You did a fine job the last time we met.
Yes, you did a fine job the last time.
Can I get your name, too?
I'm Lisa Workman, and.
And Sam Workman.
Okay, so Jack Flash, we started in nineteen eighty-six with one store, and we're up to twenty stores in Missouri and Illinois. We, in any of the communities that we're in, we're in small communities. St. Joseph, if you were to talk to that school district, they would tell you how much we have supported. Everything from the library, book reading program, to the football, the baseball, the traveling teams that they have. We do in Altamont, we are also supporting mainly with the schools is where we go. Because that seems to be like the heart of the community, what people. If you don't have children, maybe you have grandchildren, or you have your niece or your nephew. Somehow, that school system is always a part of what is wholesome and harp strings. And we like supporting where it's important. And I just gave a few examples.
Yeah, I've got a couple, too. So, like, for example, like, um, for the community, a lot of times, it's our help as well. We like to be really close with our help, involved with that. And so, like, for example, down in Verona, we had our store manager that had some significant health issues. So, we spearheaded this carry for carry where we, you know, had the opportunity to do donations to, you know, kind of help cover medical bills. And again, just if people come to us with issues that we believe like we should support, we make our best effort to do so.
And it's, it's large checks, quite honestly, that at the end of the year, I go back and look at this. And I am proud of the fact that we do give back to our communities. I don't have that dollar amount because it flows through on a K one that gets kind of divided up. But I, I can say that I am proud of the fact of what we do.
And I did notice the deletion page at the bottom.
Yes, yes, so.
Give a lot of feedback on that one.
We did, actually, because we send everybody there. If we have someone that comes into one of our managers, we tell them, go to the, go to our page, go to the contact us. They fill out then what their cause is, and then we contact them back. And it's usually a meeting with myself, my husband, our children, and we're looking at, does this make sense of something that we can support?
Question.
Sure.
Um, how much do you know about chattel?
So, I know.
Yeah, it's okay. I just didn't know how much research you have put into this area, the needs, and what you're getting into.
So, with respect to, like, how we could get involved.
Or just the name of it, or just the general idea?
Yeah. We, I mean, we have heard of some good opportunities that are here. I know that there's a big festival here. I can't think of the name of it right now.
Oh, that's. If you don't say Sweet Corn Festival right now.
Well, that was it.
Right now, we have the Brooklyn Festival in Arco. We have the Cheese Festival in Arthur. Those are some of the other ones that we sponsor, so it sounds like more festivals. We end up in Chatham. But to your point, we have a store in Farmersville, Illinois. So, we're up in this neck of the woods. We have a store in Peena as well. So, we're kind of making our way this direction as far as, you know, west as well as, like, Greenville. So, we kind of head that going up fifty-one.
But generally speaking, like, from what we've heard of Peena, or not Peena, Chatham, is that it's a growing community, right? And it sounds like y'all are happy with where your village is at in terms of, like, a growth perspective and kind of want to continue seeing, you know, new, good businesses come to town, be, you know. And that's what we want to be. We want to come to town, be good operators, and be good community members. And that's, I think, if you look at our track record, it supports that.
Any further?
Again, one more. When it comes to the layout, can you talk to everyone about how, how you're envisioning? Obviously, there's a blueprint.
I do not.
From a blueprint idea standpoint, how are you going to keep the store side separate from a potential gaming side, liquor side?
Yeah. So, again, this would be if you've, it sounds like you've been to, I think, when we talked earlier, trustee Try, you said that you've been to our Farmersville site. And so, if you've been to our stores, you would kind of see that that is something that we take into consideration. We like to have the rooms segregated and kind of, yeah, on their own with ID readers that way. You know, the only way you can get in is with a twenty-one plus ID. And to, again, yeah, try to keep that segregation there. And then, as far as kind of like the store layout, again, if you've seen our other stores, you might be able to picture that where the building is now. When we talk about capital improvement, we're talking about a larger square footage of the store. And then, again, we definitely want to have some hot food offerings there, so that will be some dedicated space for, like, a kitchen and the equipment and to be able to service that. So, a remodel of the store would be a larger square footage with some more product offering. And then, again, to answer your question on where the gaming room would be, it's typically kind of in the corner of the store. ID readers, darker kind of glass windows and that sort of thing.
But also, Paul, I mean, with the state of Illinois requirements with gaming, it's full sight lines from our staff to that door. We take that under the utmost responsibility. We've been doing this now. We were one of the first licenses in the state of Illinois, down in Verona, Illinois, of all places. And we have never, ever had any event in any of our gaming rooms. We, we take that with the utmost responsibility.
Thank you. Further? Mr. Fur.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
I'm gonna say yes.
Trustee Try.
I'll say no.
Four, good. All right, thank you. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Cool.
All right. Uh, you must bring the consent agenda to the floor.
Okay. Second.
Trustee Try has made a motion. Second by trustee Charo. Any discussion regarding the warrants?
What was the first one? Sorry.
Charo. Try, Charo.
Try Charo. It's a sentence.
Sweet thought right there. Any discussion regarding the warrants for the minutes? You're done. Mr. Fur.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Try.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
All right, under, Josh is still apparently three minutes away. But under, is there any other comment on any village business? Any public comment on any village business?
Chip could talk about the engineering.
We're gonna take an engineering report right now under.
We have three minutes. And ten years. You can get it done in three minutes. We know you. Yeah, it's twenty, twenty-five minutes. You good with that?
Give me a thirty seconds now.
Reclaiming my time.
No. Should've been fair.
Okay, a couple of items here. Been a hot minute since we've both seen each other. Congratulations on all those that won hard, long flock battles to retain their positions here. So, moving on to projects. MFT. You won, didn't you? No?
Our vote.
Our vote.
Typically, I.
He came in last of the three.
And he's not here. Second medicine.
But who came in?
You're bringing up now your bird?
Twenty-two.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Do we die?
Or please continue.
Thank you. MFT maintenance, board voted on that at the last meeting, and basically, that was day-to-day maintenance, patching, salt, tree removals, sidewalk improvements, so forth. That village crews take care of or contract directly. And then, there were three projects under that that they were moved forward with. Savannah and Walnut intersection improvements. Actually, recently received some public input on that that should be done sooner than later, so that's on the agenda. Fixing the guardrail at Walnut near the apple barn. And then, we'll do another round of oil and chip programs this year and get that on a rotation.
Is Savannah and Walnut, are you reshaping that?
Yes. So, recontouring that similar to what we did at Gordon Drive and Walnut. Getting rid of all the nasty bumps and smoothing that out. So, the latest complaint is we'll take care of that one, too.
I had one complaint when you took the bump out of Gordon from a child who liked sitting in the back of their car when they went over that.
Honestly, it was one of the highlights of my day to see how fast I could get it.
Oh, Burge.
Yeah, no, Mike. Hey, Rupert.
I believe my comment was that when we punished that, I took that eternal use eagle in that road, which is perfectly fine. Just saying.
Well, that was science.
It was. Engineering, though.
Engineering now, so you went to stall.
Start a timer for you. Moving along. Okay, so, next one, under a separate MFT contract and utilizing the remainder of the RBI money that we had, then in conjunction with additional MFT funds, moving forward with the Palmer Boulevard plans. The MFT is also into the MFT maintenance on that, so once that's approved by the state, then we can move forward with getting that plan out. Those plans out on the street.
Is that where that is? Because I have those things.
So, we are looking at patching. We're gonna do an overlay on that, combine both of those in a single contract. And then, updating the signals at Gordon Drive and Palmer. So, similar to what we did over at Walnut, at Peachtree, and over at Parkship.
Is that on pace to get done or somewhere when school's not in session?
Yes. That is, I'll do everything I can to make that happen. Let's see. Park, within the parks program, we're gonna have another round of bike path patching. Just removal replacement with concrete in the park, just kind of shutting away that. Right now, the budget allocated for thirty thousand to do that work. And then, also working with village staff on park improvements at the CCFL football fields right nearby where the, I mean, between the fields. I don't even know what that thing's called. Building tower.
Is it between the fields?
So, building island, making that a little bit more durable. It collects water and it's always pouring out the water and so forth. So, just working with village staff to see what makes sense in terms of combination with CCFL and the village and molding those two projects. Some private development work, continue advancement on Fox Creek Lot Nine. That's moving along. Let's see, next planning commission, Hannah's Point Plaque, which is a small subdivision here over by the Presbyterian Church. We'll go through the planning commission and then come to your guys' attention. But four lots being added there right to the east of the church property there by the Presbyterian Church on the north side of Walnut. And then, last one is, we're gonna do another section of experimental pavement over at Hurstborn. And that's gonna go Bristol from Hurstborn down to Hastings, then Hastings back to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Same technology?
Same technology.
Taking lessons learned from Keystone?
Yes. So, what.
Told that story about.
Yeah, what we're doing.
It wasn't perfect? It wasn't perfect? Because they're like, hey, it's been perfect. No. Like, we explained to them, what you're, you're back to us, we explained to them, we learned some things from this. And now, that's even better.
Absolutely. And village crews are currently doing, they have to patching in that area, some concrete patching. So, when we go through their mill, there shouldn't be a lot of surprises in there. Plus, they're telling us that the subgrade material is in much better condition than what we saw over at Keystone. So, expecting that to work out a little bit better, a little bit smoother. But we're gonna do some crown correction there, do the fiber modified, capillary modified asphalt, and pave that in here.
Ready for questions? Is that oil and chip already on rotation? Mentioned it.
Oil and chip, yes. That's what it means. So, we're working with Berry. We've identified the next section of that, trying to get a rotation. Right now, it's kind of looking at about a seven-year rotation to hit everything. So, seven segments all the way through, you know, as we continue to hit those areas. And there's a lot of areas in the village that have not been hit in more than ten years. So, just trying to get everything touched once and then go back to the more populated rural areas and hit those on a more regular basis once you make our way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Now, we're ready for the first item on our agenda.
All right. Well, thank you for adjusting. It's one of my slowness leaving the city. What we put together this evening is a presentation that recaps the phase we just went through with the village. I will. My name is Josh Mandell. Matt Meier, my associate, and then a couple of our associates with Core Construction. Can you hear me? With or without? We're with FGM Architects. Core Construction was our estimating and kind of advisement partner on the project. We went through a conceptual design, programming, scope and schedule phase with the village to look at a new municipal complex. And this evening, we wanted to revisit and recap what we've accomplished in this phase and present you with sort of recommendations or next steps to move forward with the project. We've structured the presentation into five parts. The last part will be discussion. But please feel free to interrupt along the way if you want to have discussion in the midst of any particular slide. We'll be left a little bit of time in our structure to allow for discussion at the end. We're gonna talk about the objectives of the phase we went through, the processes, the product. We're gonna hit on the draft design, which will be really looking at some space plans, looking at site plan, and looking at massing. And I want to differentiate between design of a building exterior and massing. Just sort of start to study this building in three dimensions on site. And then, we've got some precedent projects that really were the inspiration along the way, both early on and at the end, that sort of relate back to that massing. Speaks to the architectural design, but we're not there. We don't have a finished product design, which would be normal at this stage of conceptual sort of thinking about the project. We're talking a little bit about the budget, which we've called a cost opinion, but we're talking about budget in very conservative, high-level terms. We've got a range of costs and scheduled to implement the project, meaning going through the finite design, engineering, bidding, construction, and administration, contract, construct. We will look out at when the village can move into the facility, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, the objectives and the early processes that we went through really started with talking with the village and determining, what are we trying to accomplish? What are you all interested in, and what can we help you accomplish in that process? So, replacement municipal complex for this structure and what's across the street really was the overall objective. It's consolidating village operations, for the most part, into a single modern structure that will accommodate staff, will protect the staff, will accommodate the community. It will allow for interactions in a more streamlined and direct way. It'll set the identity of the village, really looking out into the future. It'll speak to Veterans Park, and it'll create some, and I don't mean to oversell it, but some idea and some spark for development. It'll create a dialogue with that park, in other words, and really create a village square. And really creating space for the village to grow its operations within the village. We don't mean to overbuild, but allowing for building, building today that will last for fifty-plus years is our aim overall. Providing and housing technology, so the SCADA system, the servers that are really in spaces that weren't meant for that when they were constructed. This building will accommodate and allow for technology to function both today and give a significant amount of flexibility into the future. So, we started with a questionnaire that was more so filled out in person, but was provided to a steering committee of village representatives, including board members, including members of the police department, including village administration, utilities folks. Every aspect of village operations, we tried to take into account so that we could create what's called a space needs program. Space needs program, as it appears, and we're not really hoping that you can read the tiny print on the screen, but this is sort of a tactical document that allows us as designers and estimators to track how many of each type of space, what size spaces, what are the relationships between those spaces, so that we're not just guessing at a size building. We're coming up in a scientific way with what the scale and size of the project ought to be. And then, we're balancing that, which landed in the neighborhood of around thirty thousand feet. We're balancing that with the site that we have to work with, right? The village identified early on the site where it was going to go. It's on the east side of the park, on the east side of Market. And we needed to be able to say, yes, this building size not only accommodates your needs for a structure, but that structure then works on the site, allows for parking, allows for vehicular and pedestrian circulation, access, and so forth. So, early on, the diagrams looked like this, and this is representative of several different versions of where we looked at two-story. We looked at single-story. We looked at maybe multiple-story on the site. There were requests to study how basement plus the ground floor would work. There were requests to, you know, let's be efficient with our layout on the site, but let's also not take up the entire site and then not allow for parking. So, we tested a lot of these ideas, and based on that program, the departmental adjacencies in one kind of combined exercise, looking at site, looking at adjacency within the structure, and looking at massing. I mentioned massing. This is sort of the direction of, or this is the origin of some of those massing ideas. So, they've evolved a little bit, but we're not at a willing design yet. Then, the next stage went into a space plan diagram, and this is sort of nerdy architect speak, but we're talking about now, not worrying about the thickness of walls, the placement of doors necessarily, but we're getting into where do secure lines for keeping the public on one side of the wall and allowing staff on the other side of the wall go? How do people enter and exit the building? Where are their flow-throughs for police vehicles? And you'll see, actually, the direction of the salad port, which is for the security transfer of detainees. That changed through conversations about how the cycle worked. So, this is a progress through a lot of different ideas and a lot of different needs that the village had, the police department had, in order to make sure that we were going in the right direction, make sure that we accommodated everything. But this is what we would call a space plan diagram. And then, pivoting into the next part of our presentation, that becomes the space plan. So, we've put shadow on this. We've put doors and walls, thickness. And now, this really looks like a real plan. However, it really is an evolution of that space plan. So, we're not at the ability to engage a builder and have this constructed, but now, this is to the inch correct to scale. This has realistic thicknesses for interior and exterior wall construction. It has door swings, stairs, and elevators to reach between the two levels. It even has furniture shown. In some cases, you can see that the trustee meeting room and the community room, you know, accommodates the number of people. So, we're trying to get very granular, even though this is a conceptual design, even to the point of identifying where there would be a storm shelter around the dispatch facility. You can see on the legend over here, which, again, it's tiny print, not expecting everybody to be able to read that, but to orient you to the plan, police department is on this north half of the structure. Public main entry would be here, and this yellow color represents the council meeting room or the trustee meeting room and lobby. And then, the south half is aimed at administration and utilities. And we'll get into the plan, and I can also zoom in on it if they're, you know, during discussion. That's the main floor level. And I mentioned salad port. This is where flow-through of vehicles would be from north to south. And the detention area is in the purple color. I mentioned dispatch. That's on top of the basement level. So, this is a two-story structure. There's a basement level and an underground level. The basement level includes evidence storage, locker room for police, a fitness room that's accessible to all village personnel, toilet, shower space. There's electrical and mechanical spaces here, which includes the server and the SCADA. This is the break room that's accessible to all personnel. This is the break room that's accessible to all personnel, and then EMA is on the lower level as well. That is, as far as we got with the plan, which then we tested on-site, kind of a back-and-forth process, but we made sure that that exact footprint of about thirty thousand square feet spread over the two floor levels fits on-site, allows, sorry, allows for police vehicle movement and parking on the northern end. Secure parking, by the way, with fence and gate, allows for the vehicular movement. And I think I, yes, I pointed out that the directionality of the salad port changed where it's from, north to south. And then maintaining this alley, this red line represents the buildable area that you have available to you on that site without acquiring other property or going in other directions. And we maintain this curb cut on the south, this bidirectional drive, parking for staff vehicles on the south side, and the ability for this residence to have access from its current driveway. So, not mandating any changes here, but you'll see, we don't even show the driveway. The idea is that in the future, that is an option for the village to expand, but it's not requirement to build this plan today. And then when it comes to visitor parking, we're taking advantage of all of the space that market has to offer and allowing visitors to park on head-in on the east side of the street. So, pivoting from the plans, space plan and site plan, these are massing views that really give you a very early sense of the way this building could take shape. And these are based on some precedent projects that we responded to positively. We looked at a number of different styles of architecture, and these, the buildings that I'll show you in the upcoming slides will represent sort of why those were inspirational views and how they connect back to this. This is not set in stone by any means, but this allows you to kind of perceive the scale of the building as a single-story grade with basement, and the idea of trying to gain some volume in the center section and achieve a grand lobby, right? The idea, this is the identity of the village, and has display, and has history, you know, for example, aerial satellite imagery, trophies, plaques. This is an opportunity to display the history of the village and the personality of the village within that space. And then to orient you, this is looking westward at that front elevation, sort of two different perspectives. This is more of a human eye view from sort of the sidewalk on the other side of Market, and then this is a little bit further south and a little bit further back. This is the west side of the building. One of the challenges with properties and projects like this is that this is sort of exposed on all sides. It's not a building that has a front and then a rear yard that can be really uncelebrated. We really have to consider all four sides of this building as public-facing. The west side, which this lower-right image represents, will be the least seen, but it still will be seen by both neighbors and passersby. So, we have the challenge together of trying to figure out how this building can really on all four elevations, public-facing and civic in scale, monumental, but at the same time respecting budget and respecting the fact that this isn't really where the public experiences the building, but still will be able to see it. This is really the main facade, the south end being adjacent to staff parking. And those precedent projects that I mentioned, I've got four to show imagery of. This one is probably most similar to what we're seeing today. The idea that we would have a slightly elevated, we'll use the term plinth, but that main floor, that ground floor would be elevated several feet, both to protect from what otherwise would be a soft story where vehicles could crash into it, but also to give it a little more presence on the street since it's only a single story. So, we've utilized in this project and your project, the idea of ramps and stairs to provide an accessible and monumental means of access to what is a secured and protected floor level. And we've, in our plan, identified specific areas for police, that grand lobby field, which was, it's not a direct match for this, but the idea of that high-volume space, a lot of natural light, the rear elevation you'll see is still, it's not siding, it's not, no windows, it's still got function and a purpose. And then an idea of what a council meeting room might look like and project at that scale. The next precedent project is, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even identify this one, this is Cary, the Village of Cary, near Chicago. This is Caledonia, Wisconsin, which is south-central in the state of Wisconsin. Again, a very similar idea of popping up that center section. The architecture leads to the public understanding where they go. So, there's really no question, one of the issues that we even experienced ourselves the first time coming to this building is which door, right? How do I get in here? And this was not designed as a municipal building, municipal built hall originally. So, purpose-built architecture that is clear to folks in terms of wayfinding and how to get in, and then what that looks like on the inside. These are all very similar images because they're all in that same lobby, but very clear where I go if I need a records request, if I need to interact with the police department, if I need to interact with the utility side, or I need to visit a village administrator. It's very clear to people where they go from a wayfinding and just spatial perspective in spaces like this. And still very welcoming and intimate in spaces where, you know, there may be an opportunity to sit down and talk to somebody, whether it's in an open space or even a meeting room. Then we pivot to a project in Arkansas. This was not necessarily favored by the group, but initially, this allowed us to show off the scale of, in this case, a two-level space. But spaces in this building really exemplify, even without worrying about two stories, a lot of bright space, or rather, natural-lit spaces that will lead to kind of the wellness of employees and the satisfaction of employees, a lot of views to the exterior, fitness spaces. These are programmed into the new municipal complex for Village of Chatham. And again, another look at a council meeting or a court space that gives you a sense of scale and using that popped-up high volume. And the last precedent project is Village of Roxanna, closer to St. Louis. This project has a very different character on the exterior, but utilizing masonry and utilizing alternative to the raised plinth that we talked about, actually using planters and low-site walls to prevent that soft-story effect. Just an alternative methodology of providing a village hall and a police department with the architectural kind of plan setup. You have a different look at a council chamber space there in the lower right. This picture is very impactful to us because it shows how a lot of the open office spaces can feel. In this case, they don't have a finished ceiling, they take advantage of skylights, and they allow for collaboration, in this case detectives' areas where they have partner desks, they're hearing each other's phone calls, they're working together, and that then segues to private offices on the perimeter. You'll see in the plan, if we dive into it, kind of how that relates to your plan. And this image on the left, the last kind of precedent, is the idea of a public way, again, very clear wayfinding, simple messaging, secure side of the line so that staff can interact with visitors. This is a fixed window system that allows both passive voice and paperwork to be passed back and forth without having the staff be exposed to firearms risk or an irate customer. There are other systems out there. We can do movable window systems, you know, there's other options in terms of how you and your staff would interact with the public, but the idea is that we want to create a well-defined, safe barrier for staff in the facility. With respect to budget, I'm going to invite Caleb to join me and speak a little bit, but we worked with Core, and they're going to talk a little bit about the cost opinion that we developed for the project at this scale.
Thanks, Josh. Yeah, Caleb Leese, Vice President, pre-construction at Core Construction, so privileged to be here again. So, really, we did a conceptual budget that was based on more comp projects, and then since they've developed something further with a three-dimensional model, walls, even wall thicknesses, we run through, go through, and do what we call a detailed estimate. So, now it's specific to what you saw, those walls, those heights, that site plan, and do more looking at parts and pieces. So, rather than looking at what did other projects cost, this is this project, and assigning you the prices from the local market to come up with a dollar volume. So, that's the process that was behind it. So, there's a detailed estimate that basically came to this cost summary. So, we went through and looked at the site, we looked at the building structure, the finishes, actually went through the building and assigned flooring type to every room in the building, every ceiling in the building, every type of wall, how thick is that wall, and then assign whether a steam view or drywall wall to it. The exterior of the building, we assume an all masonry exterior, and it's also even got a little bit on the higher end, it'll allow some metal pale accents. So, I mean, there's some flexibility. We see that number definitely covering the level that you see in the project that he showed. So, we can probably go to the next slide. So, we talked about the cost of writing, you can probably go ahead and populate here. So, there's different parts and pieces to the project, so we call them hard costs, off costs. So, okay, the cost to build it, but also there's the cost to design it and put stuff in it after it's built, such as furnishings, audiovisual systems. So, that's really what this is speaking to here is that there's a hard cost, that's the site development structure, the contingencies and allowances, we have the professional services, and then there's what goes inside the building. For a total project range, that basically we say all-in master budget, around eighteen to twenty-one million, which is close to the conceptual number we thought. I think we hope to maybe go down a little bit, and it did go down a little bit, but it still has fallen in the range of the kind of projects we are looking at, which I think makes sense based on it is a very similar-looking project. So, that cost per square foot range for construction, but also a cost for the entire project cost, you're six hundred dollars per square foot plus. And that would be something that if you determine to go the construction management route, that would continue to be developed as you get into really full schematic design, design development, and then construction documents that would then go out for public bidding by that construction manager. And then some comparison projects, I think he showed a number of these, but you can see the range here. We are falling within the range of those other projects. They had an average of about six-thirty, and so, you know, we're saying they're six hundred plus, it could be slightly under that average, or again, if there are choices made, depending on the bid market, depending on whether or not tariffs will have an effect on it, which I know, we don't know yet, right? So, that's really where it's sitting at, would be a high-level confidence that this is the cost range that this would fall into if we continue to use the same design path. Any questions on the cost before we jump into schedule?
Yeah, I'll give you one. When you talk about cost trends, what is the factor you use for every year you for doing something?
Before COVID, we would have said three to five percent per year. During COVID, we had some years that there's argument, there was one year that was almost twenty-nine percent. And so, I think we're back much after COVID, we actually got lower than the three to five, and now it's probably sitting around three. And then again, we'll see what the market does here coming up.
And it gives you an hour, right?
Yeah.
Maybe a compliment to that answer is that this really looks at the timeline we're about to show, I say this, the budget that was presented looks at when you would be bidding this project. So, if this project were to push out to twenty-six or twenty-seven to bid, obviously, we'd hire, we'd escalate more, but this fall is probably the most aggressive timeline we'd be able to bid. So, we're saying, hey, this is kind of like strike while the iron's hot version, and then if it's pushed out further, then, you know, further out we go, the less specificity we can have.
It never gets cheaper.
Never gets cheaper.
And I would say, timing-wise, it's always best to bid late fall, going into like November, December, and start work the next spring. That gets you the best bids because everybody's looking for work the next year. And then it also allows you to start work at the best time of the year, which is in the spring, to avoid a lot of winter conditions, so you can try to get that building enclosed before the next winter. So, just again, maybe another good reason to do it, but you don't have to. There's ways, obviously, to build through the winter or get bids too.
So, looking at a schedule, we've got it presented as text, and then we've got a graphic version. I prefer the graphic, but I'll run through the text, the milestones. This will also orient you, if you haven't gone through a construction project and a design project, to the terminology that architects and engineers and contractors use, which is the phases of design, right? So, schematic design is our first step. We're assuming beginning that as soon as May one, perhaps, or that allows for work with the steering committee during the summer. Schematic design would be complete July. Design development, which is that next milestone. Schematic design, by the way, is really a high level. It takes the conceptual work that we've done, which is arguably straying into schematic design, puts a little bit more flesh to it and identifies a lot of engineering systems that we really haven't gotten into. So, options for mechanical, electrical, the size of the generator, all of these items that right now we've sort of guessed at, we'll get much more specific during schematic design. There'll be a lot of questions that we ask you all about good, better, best, right? Do you want the high-end system that probably has the most upfront cost and the least operations cost? Do you want something in the middle? Do you want, you know, the Goldilocks answer is usually what we hear, but schematic design is when we're asking a lot of questions to prompt decisions about selections of systems. Design development proceeds from there to start to even put more detail to that. We start to develop our three-part specifications, and we get towards the bidding documents, which are the next phase. By the time we would hit, and this is a very conservative, long-leaning schedule, and I'll get to what Caleb was talking about because we have another option, but we are confident that the bidding documents and that process would be complete by essentially start of calendar twenty-six, which means that we would be soliciting and letting contracts probably by the end of the first quarter of next calendar year in this conservative schedule look. And that means you'd be breaking ground, and site development would be happening about a year from now, all right? That is something that we feel confident we can hit or accelerate and beat, but right now, we're showing this sort of conservative-looking timeline. Activities would begin, depending on long-lead items being probably the first, so that there'd be a lot of submittals and paperwork that would flow. There might be a month to two months before you actually see activity at the site after letting a contract. But work would begin in this schedule in the middle of twenty-six, about a year to construct, and that means you're moving in and we're punching out the facility somewhere in about two years from this calendar point. The graphic version of that same schedule is, we have completed this phase one, this preliminary design effort to identify scope, cost, and schedule. We want to allow probably the balance of the month of April for digestion, comment, feedback. It may be very clear to you, in which case we've done a great job, but we typically want our clients to spend some time making sure this is the right direction to go. The phase two, the implementation phase, is the lion's share of the services that we would provide, and that would include designing and documentation, bidding, and construction. So, that's roughly a two-year timeframe from where we stand today in conservative terms. Zoning, conditional use permit, usually a building like this requires a special permit that you all are planning on zoning, variant would grant, but we would process through that early on. So, the development of documents that adds up to this two, you know, two-or-so-year timeline is construction documents, bidding and permitting, and then the actual construction of the facility. And that puts us at an in-service for the new facility in May of twenty-seven. So, we're regurgitating the same information from the prior slide, but in a different format. One of the things that we want to talk about with you is those phases of milestones. We're prepared to talk in more detail, but we need to begin, if you say, all right, Josh and Matt, get started, our first step is scheduling that schematic design process. And that can begin tomorrow, that can begin in May one, but that's our first step, and that's more meetings with the steering committee, that's more conversations, more questions to get to where we have a schematic design package that then has an estimate put to it. Same thing happens with design development. We meet, we develop our documents, we come back with an estimate, and we make a presentation to you all at each of these milestones. That typically happens once at least, not twice, during construction documents. So, by the time about six months pass and we have construction documents ready to go out to bid, ready to go to market in the fall this year, or at latest, winter into twenty-six, you'll have seen the development of this, you've seen and improved the budget for the project. There's no surprises at that point. This is not a swoop in at the eleventh hour, present information that you haven't seen developed. With respect to procurement options, which we know the village has not decided on or locked into necessarily, we know we want a competitive bid, that's what we've understood today. There are options to go with a single-prime constructor, and there are options to use what's called a construction management. Construction management has a couple variants. We're going to talk about construction management at risk. Construction management at risk is really to us, and I'm probably oversimplifying it, but it's boiling, the services of the construction manager basically are valuable early on, and that's something called pre-construction, where as we, as the architects and engineers going through schematic design, the construction managers are there lockstep with us and are doing sort of check and balance review of our documents, of our design concepts, how we approach the site, all the aspects of the design, so that you have another set of eyes looking at what we're generating as your architect and engineer consultants. And they're developing recommendations for cost along the way as well. And they're developing recommendations for cost along the way as well, real time. The difference between that and general contractor bidding is that the general contractor doesn't see the documents until the documents are done, right? So instead of seeing them in schematic design, design development and construction documents milestones, the general contractor is only seeing it when it's advertised for bid, six months, eight months. That's not a no-go, but that means that you're putting all your eggs in the basket of that one bidder building. So we want to evaluate the merits, let's say, of each system with you. We're not looking for a decision today. The reason we're bringing it up is that construction manager also allows for breaking the project up into single, I'm sorry, multiple prime packages and taking bids potentially earlier than we would if it was a general contractor and allowing for us to get underway with work this fall much more reliably than if we just sit down and work on a straight-through, single-prime bidder situation. Happy to talk about that in more detail, but the idea is that that will have, that could have a bearing on accelerating the schedule. So this is that graphic schedule again. You are here, owner review for the rest of April, but we see an acceleration. And this is, this is really done to, in fairness to Core, really kind of from our experience, not so much in conjunction with Core. We think there's the possibility of accelerating to the tune of several months, if not more than. And that puts us in a position of documents accelerating. And these phases would overlap more so by virtue of the construction manager's involvement. Early packages permitting construction, but adding up to moving in probably three to four months earlier, perhaps more than the other versions show. Now, that really deserves being studied and being compared more scientifically, but we wanted to plant the seed that the two different procurement options for the building could have serious time implications, right, to the good. So there are options with respect to procurement that we think you all should consider, both options, both kind of methodologies. And really, we, Core and FGM can provide some guidance on, on details of that if, if you're some client. But we think that we're looking at from where we stand today, anywhere from a year and a half to two years, to be able to move into the facility based on the numbers in the schedule that you see, if I close out at that point. And then we are operating under a master agreement with the village, we, FGM and our team. And so we're able to provide you with a task order essentially for this next phase, the schematic design through contract administration. Or can truncate that if you're so inclined, say, well, take us through bidding, but then we don't, you know, we're going to bid the project and then maybe do fundraising. So we can valve things off in any which way. And the draft that was only sent minutes before this meeting, so you haven't probably had a chance to look at it at all yet, does create a valve between bidding and contract administration. So there is an opportunity for us to pause there if it was the profit, the pleasure of the village. But we're ready to roll basically as of today into design and all the way through contracting and construction. So again, our phase that we're really wrapping up with this presentation was to meet with the steering committee for the village to really understand the objectives of the project, to identify a space needs program, to develop a space plan and a site plan usage that took that objectives list and took that need for space and put it into a space plan form that looks like a plan, but will set us up for schematic design. We worked with our partners at Core to develop an opinion of probable cost. We generated an implementation schedule that has a couple of variants at this stage and this will get much more refined as we go forward, schedule-wise. And then this presentation today is really our, our wrap-up of all the information we've done. And in our minds, a successful project will accomplish this identity, it'll, it'll tell the story of Chatham. It will set up both for safety and for process, all the staff and all the functions that the village currently performs now and into the future, safely housing those folks. It will take, we like to say, take your kind of your service provision and your level of excellence up as you move forward and it'll create opportunities for development, be that potentially on Mulberry, you know, as Village Hall and Police relocate to a new facility. It'll spark construction and development on Village Square. It will be defined by that area of Veterans Park and Point West. And that's to us, and we believe to you, what the successful project would really entail. And so with that, I'll quit yakking at you and leave the, give the floor open to questions for our team and myself. So thank you.
Been working on this for some time. I'm looking forward to this presentation. Thank you for all that. And you did address what the only question I got is regarding village growth. And because we anticipate growth in, in the offices within the village hall. It looks like you thought of that some.
And credit to the village steering committee as much, I mean, we ask questions, but really the answers come from you all, from your personnel to be able to say, well, we also have, you know, this need in the future. We don't have that person today necessarily, but we want to allow for that. So without overbuilding, we've tried to allow for that growth and that was, that was a good partnership.
On the draft site plan, is that, is it taking up the entire west side of the, of the market?
It's closer, you have the staff parking on the south.
It's the, it's the area for them.
As we talk through some of the layout. With that parking there, it allows for, right there, yeah, so I, I, is it? It allows for that parking to be relocated?
This is, this is the street. So this area is parking, building, little parking there, existing house and existing.
It does allow that parking to be relocated in the future. If you want that re-.
For some reason I was thinking it was, yeah, I don't know the square footage, right? Not square footage, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I wasn't expecting to see that picture of the entire of the west side.
Like one of the things that we talked about when he was talking through the massing and how, you know, do you compact the building and make it two stories on the end?
The function of.
Our, our core base, pretty key points about what that does to cost quickly.
It, it just, it didn't seem like it worked for us.
Well, I'm not saying yes or no.
Having people up on the third floor.
I'm not saying right or wrong, I just, I just didn't expect, I mean, I don't know how big.
It looks big.
But then sometimes you drive there and you go, these are fish fries, it looks small. And I just didn't, yeah, to me it was like, you know, when you go in here and stand back in the middle of the gravel.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great picture. That's a good title.
Yeah.
Oh, they say that's the size.
And, and it's mostly.
That's big.
Is the police.
Yeah.
Because these, these offices sort of in the side, say about same. But the police is all new. I mean, you saw it, it's the size of a, of a kitchen over there and, and this is a real police park. And a real village hall. And in the basement, a massive storage part, room, training room, cafeteria.
Yeah.
So gives us plenty of room for growth.
Twenty-one on the foot three.
Twenty-one thousand, ninety thousand.
Yeah, it's about two-thirds on the main level, about a third level. And we went through many permutations of what, what should and could be on that basement level, what, you know, what could afford to be pushed downstairs.
A lot of this is, is future for the police and the same in this area here for us. So.
So there's no way for the public to get back in the, of the building, right?
That is the plan, that everybody comes through from. Comes in here and this person will either have a wait in here for someone to come in or over here.
So why I, why I clicked kind of beyond, Pat was looking at the, the floor plan, the space plan. So it remains to be determined how far we continue the site enclosure. So I, I took your question a different way, which was, yes, the, the expected and typical entry to the site would be on that east-facing portion, you know, again, the architecture drives people to that side. But if somebody said, I'm going to go key a police car, I'm going to wander. The idea is that at least the north end would be closed off to both pedestrians and vehicles and you'd only be able to get in there if you have credentials as a police vehicle. Once you hit kind of the dog leg and the western boundary, the red boundary, that's sort of open to whether you want to enclose and fence off the southern end or not. Right now, we're assuming not, but to be determined during design and what level of security. And especially given the fact that staff come and go so frequently. These vehicles do as well, but we didn't think it made sense at this level to start to enclose that. So it's kind of northern half secure, southern half not secure, site blocks.
Josh, from over here, it's hard to see that gate. Can you show her, can you point where the gate is, that vehicular gate?
Yeah, it really occurred, I don't know, blocking some folks, but it would really occur right about here, right about the north end of that existing southern residence that would stop both pedestrians and vehicles from being able to access the scalpel more with parking side, the police parking side.
Thank you.
I'm going to make corrections for that.
Huh?
I'm going to make corrections for that.
That's a good presentation.
It's, it's a lot of information for digestion.
So our, our next steps in the process, so when we let the initial contract to do the space needs, we wrote that in a way that allows us to continue at our pleasure with FGM if we want, but that requires more action to.
Correct.
Provide that authorization. So that's where we're going to be next is.
Paying for it. Well, paying for moving forward where we're at now.
That's the next step.
Yeah, it's a cash, right?
We've, we've been, we've been blessed with some support, financial support to keep this project moving forward, so.
I think it's excellent.
That, that will be the next move that you've got coming. These guys battled the traffic out of St. Louis for an extra fifteen minutes to get all the way here to make sure.
You did a great, that's a great presentation. The building looks great.
They did a good job all the way. Absolutely. We, we hired in-laid, they did the right age architects because we all kind of had an idea of what we wanted, but we needed someone that had done it before to be able to help us through all those steps. And initially, I think the building was quite a bit bigger, but we kind of just kept moving it down, moving it down, changing it around, moving it over here. And I think we all got to a point where we were happy with what was presented.
And my judge point out, we're going to train in the fifty-year house.
For sure.
We don't have fifty years.
I'm assuming if we're going to construction manager round, we look at Core at that.
That is my decision.
That's a, that's a question.
I've been open with Core and O'Shea's in the back, back there. I've been open with them, that hired FGM to put a set of plans together. How you guys want to handle that after this is going to be up to you.
Does it got to go out? I mean, most municipal building, how is that?
Yeah, so you can, I mean, the way they said you can put the entire project out for bid with, with a single contractor and that would go out for public bid, or you can do it in parts, but each part, assuming it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, does, it wouldn't need to go out for a public bid. So there are some ways with, now, we don't have to go back out, you know, for RFQs with.
Architects.
With architectures. That's, you, you guys went through that process. You don't have to do that every time you want to use the same architect or engineer, as you know, which, which would frequently do. So that portion does not have to go back out, but it'll depend on how you want. If you were going to go the construction manager route, I think you would want to.
Want to or have to?
We don't ever have, there's always ways of going, but.
And it's grant, grant funding, we are using grant funding as well.
Then you will need to go out for public bid in order generally to meet the requirements for those grants.
And then when we request a bid, how long do we have to keep that open on certain parts?
Well, a reasonable amount of time to get the most responsive bids that you can get. So we'd look to other contracts that have been bid, what they think a reasonable amount of time is. I mean, for something like this, it's going to be a very limited group of responsive litters. And what generally happens then is you know who they are and you would get the packets out to them.
I'm assuming you guys have familiarity with that, doing multiple municipal projects.
Yeah, if, if you want to, if you wanted to add on to it, maybe add in some color to it.
Correct.
Yeah, so regardless if it's, if you go to the CM route, if it's us or if you go out for RFP for that CM, that CM will have to put out the whole project for public bids. So like she's talking, there'll, there'll be site work, masonry, steel.
Of course, all your divisions.
And so all those will go out with public bid packages. And you can choose that CM, you could go out with an early bid package to help facilitate the timeline, but all those packages will have to go out. So I think that is, is what she's speaking to. That's, that construction manager would be the one that would, for the, for the city, put those out, packages out for bid. And then we have assigned that construction manager to oversee and basically provide the staff on the site, the superintendent.
Correct. How do you go out to bid for a construction manager though? You, you don't have, you're, you're the business bid, I mean.
Yeah, you're really not bidding out the construction management, who's going to be the construction manager, as much as it's RFP, like you're, you could solicit RFPs and then hire you. RFP, yeah, like qualification based.
The, the construction manager provides a professional service like an architect. So it's a similar process, however you would, you would get, get an architect. And then once, once that construction manager is on board, then they would help package and, and put out the bids. We have been seeing anywhere between three to four weeks for letting, putting bids out, leaving them on the street for three to four weeks is kind of what we've been seeing. I'm assuming you're probably in the same range.
Yeah, a project this size, yeah, probably not more than four weeks.
Yeah, so timeframe.
And then help us, who are you with?
FGM.
Okay.
And then the two people in the back are with O'Shea.
And on, on fairness, are those timelines what you lost those?
Yeah.
Two different, two different possibilities.
It's totally the same.
Yes, I, I, now I'm thinking back about how we chose an architecture and design. It wasn't about the lowest price. We, we interviewed essentially three or four different, yeah.
Yeah, there's a process, it's a step in the process that you go before you got to.
It would be the same process for a construction manager slash general contractor.
The easiest way I've ever explained.
For construction manager, yes.
Yes.
For, for archers, if, if we say RFQ, it means you're looking at who the group is.
Correct.
And their credentialing and their background. If we say RFP, you're looking a lot more about price tag against coming up there, so. It's qualifications and proposal, but you might as well say qualifications and prices.
Can I add one more factor to that?
Sure.
When it comes to construction management, one of, and I, I mentioned it in one of those slides, the, the function of pre-construction, which really is what it sounds, it's advisement along the way during design. You don't have to commit to this tonight by any means, but early in the design process, you really do need to commit to using construction management or not, because once you pass probably about fifty percent of the design development, but arguably even earlier, the value of that pre-construction, you know, drops to zero if you graph it. So that the pre-construction advisement has a value, has a cost, has a value. Whereas the general contracting methodology, which we have lots of experience with, and it's, it's got its place. That is, the general contractor sees it once everything's fully baked, right? So just a different way of doing things, but it puts the village in a position of needing to understand the pros and cons and deciding probably in the next two months, let's say, next two to three months maximum, about whether to utilize that methodology or say, no, we're going to just go forward with general contract. So I, I just want to put that out there that that's a, that's an early commitment relative to when we're doing construction documents in this fall, that's the horse is off the bar.
So safe to say you're summary on the pros and cons of the two approaches is with the early in construction management, what you're looking for is there is, there is a cost for that service, but in lieu of that cost, what you're looking for is a tighter budget and fewer change orders?
Based on quality documents, correct.
Based, based on the design of what actually goes out to bid for, versus you got somebody that, you know, we'll call you as an architecture artist versus a builder, practitioner, has to put the art together and it's going to tell somebody. It's at, at one point, does the guy that has to put it together start telling the artist, you can't do that?
Or, or it's invisible, right? It's. Or, or it's invisible, right, it's, the same surface will be realized, but there's a smarter way behind the scenes, the structure or the mechanical systems, or, you know, some aspect that you wouldn't necessarily see with an end user in the space was more effectively built, and so therefore it was a cheaper way to get to the same end destination. But yes, that, one way or the other, it probably is a cost, it's cost upfront to save money in the end through control of the documents.
They're trying to tell me the future.
Yep.
Potentially. I agree.
I would hope so.
Who else? I know you got a lot of questions. Huh?
Okay, if not.
Good, I think that's good.
Second.
John? There you go.
Yes, thank you. It's nice that Paulie was playing all the favor.
If you think of things after tonight, we know how to get in touch with us.
We know how to do that. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Your own phone speed up.
Right, which, before we take the next step, you change your number and don't give it to me anymore.
I've had the same phone number twenty-five years.
So that said, all right, is there any additional public comment on any village business for our work? Are you done? I'll take a motion to adjourn the board.
No, I make that motion.
Trusty Charles made a motion. Second, I trust the trial, fair, all right, closed, means adjourned.
Now, we have other business, we have a committee in the hole after this, but we'll give you, it's all a few minutes, and you can.
Point a person.
Move if you want, or. Stick around before today.
Thank you.
Well done, good job. All credit to the team.
Which I do understand.
Thank you all.
And you can't stand to ask me going straight to the budget.
What?
You don't get to speak during the next, we don't need a village manager update day.
Kayla's got it all.
Straight to Kayla. Yeah, I think that's right.
I've got some grades now.
See you soon.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, what's your street color? No, I'm. I don't think that's a. What, like, like? I've got ten. I don't think so. I just told you, where's your gun?
You're the backup for me.
So I have one question, color, where's the word from?
I don't pay stock or experience.
Korea or?
I think it's.
I'm going to tell you.
There used to be a firm on the channel.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I think definitely we'll look for that, I mean, which is local, that, and if they can, we'll say those too, because they had a couple.
We're doing all the work. So all that is going to be structured down there, it's going to save us.
Hostage problems.
Well, that is.
Yeah, you know, two good says no.
All righty.
Well, that's the thing, is, is.
Let's get this meeting.
Who wants to start the committee?
Let's go. One of us to, as it was like.
It is seven fourteen, let's call the committee the whole to work. Uh, roll.
Trusty Charlie.
Here.
Trusty Dallas.
Here.
Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Charlo.
Present.
Trustee Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kinsey.
Present.
Any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none, can I have a motion to bring the consent agenda to the table?
Make a motion.
Trusty Ferguson has made a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trusty Fletcher. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, five. No old business, new business, we have the engineering update, we have the village manager update. Does the village manager have anything at all to say?
I can give it all my time to Kayla to move the budget presentation.
Welcome to the floor.
The gentleman.
Yeah, we all have comments, right? I don't need to pull it up.
No, you don't have to. So first, I want to start with the April supplemental appropriation transfer ordinance. I sent out a memo to you guys, and it's been on board docs since last week. Wanted to talk about, there's not much things that were large or unplanned in the last few months here with us. This is actually the first time I'm not presenting a supplemental budget adjustment, so we were able to work within all of our lines this year, so I think we budgeted pretty well as far as not having to do that. The only notable one, which I did mention back in January, was our engineering costs were a little higher than expected this year due to a lot of projects we had with grant money, so they didn't fall within our normal budget, so I had to do a big adjustment there, but I think that got us covered for the rest of the year with that adjustment. And that was really the only notable one, unless you guys had other questions. We had a few IT things, like I mentioned, we made a switch there, but not too much affected at the end of the year here, so if there's no questions on that, I will move on to the new budget. Okay, so.
You'll have that?
Yes.
For the ordinance.
Yes, in the next meeting, you'll have the ordinance together to vote on. And that's not to say too, things could change in the, in the next couple of weeks, I did copy up that, but we're hoping there's not many more adjustments to be had, like if my people stay in their budget, then we should be good for the end of the year. So, on to the next, next step. I've sent out friendly emails on that.
Review, or highlight.
Highlighted, bold, underlined.
Ver.
Making it. Making it clear. Okay, so for review budget, this is the same presentation I pretty much present in each year, I've done this, kind of giving you a high level overview of the process, and then what my departments have requested special for this fiscal year. So we start with the fund structure, we really focus on the three major funds that we budget for, which are general fund, electric fund, and water and sewer fund, as I go through this. So the budget process, back in February, we met with the village manager, and I know he is always talking to the village president about the goals and things to gear up for the new year. We looked at revenues, personnel expenses, debt service, and electric, water, and sewer expenses that are upcoming for this year. The way we kind of start is we basically start with previous year budget numbers, and I kind of talked to all the departments to see how we can adjust that, or if we can kind of keep it within the same realm as the last year, depending on what the expenses are. Then during the last month of March, we presented budget materials, all kind of including things regarding our, where our cash is at, what, what budget is recommended along with that information that is spit out as of the projected numbers that we have, are having for the end of this year, and what we can possibly do with those for the coming year. And early, this is an early board meeting for April, so in early April, we got together with our management teams and did some kind of final discussions on what they wanted request wise, and what can fit into this year's budget as far as revenues and expenses, recurring expenses that we already had plugged in. And then that brings us to tonight, where I'm talking on this PowerPoint. And a draft of that budget ordinance will be available to the public and you guys, so you can kind of see just in ordinance form what the budget's going to be. In the next week, just as last year, if any of you would like to meet with the village management team, you're welcome to set up a meeting with us, and we can go into a lot more detail than I have, than I'm able to tonight, to give you kind of an idea of where we sit with those funds. And then at the next board meeting, I hope to have you guys vote on the budget, so we can get it passed before the fiscal year beginning of May first. And this also would require a public hearing to be held before, which should be advertised in the Clarion this coming, this week, telling the public that they are able to have opportunity to provide input to the budget that's being voted on.
What's that?
Get some extra carriage part.
Uh, so budget goals, as always, we always strive for better customer service, performance, economic development, and quality of life in the village. Next slide, it is our projected revenues for the year, we're coming in around thirty million, thirty point five million in revenues. I've had the pie shape kind of giving you the breakdown of what funds are taking up that thirty million percentage wise, and stays about the same every year as far as those go. And then expense wise, same, same thing, we've got thirty-four million in expenses budgeted. I'll go into why that's more than our revenues as usual. Same thing with that, the pie has stayed pretty much consistent as far as the percentage breakdown of where our expenses lie, there's no major changes in that. Then kind of our summary of the overview of revenues versus expenditures. Always remember that revenues are budgeted very conservatively, so we slightly, or we overestimate our expenses versus our revenues that are conservative to kind of make sure we're, we're being fiscally responsible with our numbers, and what ends up happening at the end of the year is usually the opposite of what, what's budgeted for those. Typically, all funds do end up close to breaking even, and, or have a slight surplus because we like to build up our three month cash reserves to have on hand for emergencies. As we learned in the last couple of years, we can run into an emergency that is very costly. So, for this year, we are estimating that greater, greater expenditures versus revenues, that deficiency is attributable to expenditures intended to be financed with restricted cash, issuance of debt, and fund reserves if sufficient cash is not provided by annual revenues. Also, some expenditures, I do always copy up, those are contingent on the fund revenue performance, so if we don't perform as estimated, I always work closely with the department heads to make sure that we are in line with the revenues coming in, and we're not overspending on the expenditures, even if they were put in the budget to start. That, that deficit is kind of made up of a few things on a major scale, I've listed here, capital projects, we would like to transfer five hundred thousand more this year over to that fund for future years' projects. We also estimate our liability related to accrued benefits at approximately a million dollars. If you remember, that's basically all of that time that we carry on the books for people's vacations, sick, that we have to make sure we have on hand in case employees were to leave. So, we have to pay out that money if that were to happen, and we very conservatively estimate all of that money in the budget, which we hope not every employee would leave, but that is, that is the total cost on that. And then we also have potential finance items, that, that includes vehicles this year, and that would be five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that. All of those together total approximately two point, two million to lessen the deficit due to their nature and funding sources if incurred. Next slide, it's the overview of our budgeted revenues versus budgeted expenditures, and then actual revenues versus actual expenditures. You'll kind of see the trend in the first two years. As I've mentioned, your budgeted revenues are lower than your expenditures, but then you'll see after that, with the actuals, we do bring in more revenues than expenditures for FY twenty-two and twenty-three. Twenty-four, you'll see a difference in that one, that was the duratio year. So we had a lot more expenditures that year that came in unexpectedly, so that is why you are seeing those expenditures exceeding the revenues on that year. And then you'll see in FY twenty-five, which is what the year we're in currently, the gap between revenues and expenditures is a little larger than normal, well, that's when we brought in our seventy-five percent reimbursement from FEMA for the duratio expenses. So, there's reason for, for those, those differences that we had in those couple of years. And then same thing with going forward with FY twenty-six, we're about that same normal gap of our revenues, budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures, so that's the trend we've got. And then I'm going to go into some of the highlights with the three major funds. I was going to pull up the department heads to talk about theirs, I'll talk about administrative department, and we'll get into the others as we keep going, but for administrative department, really, our, our biggest differences basically include the salary adjustments that are in here, and then some IT upgrades, as I mentioned, we are with a new IT company now. They're recommending certain things that we should do to upgrade our IT system, the keys, and with the software updates and things like that, so that includes things like computers, phone, internet changes, all of that. I did list out the McClure State Grant, which we've had for a couple of years now, we did use some of it for the building demolition on the square, but we are carrying forward that amount to, to keep doing things that we can with that money going forward. And then, as mentioned before, we would like to transfer the five hundred thousand from the general fund to the capital projects fund. This is just to continue the progress towards the redevelopment of the village square. It's all indicated in the village, village's capital improvement and comprehensive plan in coordination with the economic development plan, so we will have that in there. And then I also have, we are carrying forward the DCO grant, which is helping us with the architectural, engineering, and development costs of that same project I just mentioned and what was talked about tonight. So, just grant money is being used to continue that, that project. And then I will bring Dustin up here to talk about parks and streets for his projects.
First off, we've been doing the bike path repairs for the last five or six years, which has made a huge difference, those are really holding up. We wanted to continue, last year we raised it from thirty thousand to fifty thousand. We wanted to continue. Last year we raised it from thirty thousand to fifty thousand and we're going to continue that this year. As to replace some of the bike paths in Jatton Community Park. Some of that's kind of deteriorated and we want it fed up to, up to creative. The CCFL concrete project was processed by Joe Smith, head of CCFL. He had some concerns with in between football fields with the drainage and having handicap accessible pathways with where the bleachers are going to go. They kind of sit in the mud and stuff. So they, we wanted to kind of have that project. What we came up with was we were going to fund a third of it of the estimated project, which was from Jim at a hundred ninety thousand. We're going to take the thirty three from us and the CCFL has raised around thirty thousand. And we're going to kind of change the project a bit smaller or do it in segments. So we're looking at that now. Joe's going back with CCFL and they're going to have those meetings and they come up with a new plan and use them all again. The concession repairs is on here. That's actually from last budget where we were going to think, first he tried brought this one up, where we were going to paint the football and soccer concession stand. That has already been approved and it may be done by May one. They're supposed to be working this week. So if it is, it will not, it will not be used in the next budget until we're done this budget. The sign upgrades, this year what we, we've been putting the new signs in Jatton Community Park. We did the cemetery last year. This year we wanted to hit the village square, Berners Park, and then want to do one there on, right on Walnut for J C. We thought that would look really nice and kind of keep the flow of the signs going. And then we have a new one ton truck for the parks. The last time we bought a truck, a one ton for them, it's been, it's well over ten years. So it's time to upgrade it. I put the whole one aside, use it when we need it and start with a new truck. Street department, Jim talked about the experimental first of road project. Our guys are currently right now doing concrete patches. And then once we get that approved, we'll go through and do milling and re-vengeance. We also asked for a parking lot and street stripper. We're going to re-strip all of Jatton Community Parks parking lots. We're going to let now. Eric Hansen's done a great job for it. She's out marking everything. We're going to start doing her measuring and then we're going to buy this new machine and then we'll have that. So we can use it out here on the square of now and up and down here in front of these restaurants. So you get all these parking lots, our parking lot, all the parks and kind of upgrade that paint on the striping. And then the hot box. So hot boxes, our guys patch pot holes, which we've all seen. We got hit pretty hard this winter. They use the hot box. It keeps the asphalt hot and kind of turns it over. So when they go to scoop it up, it's on a brick and it's easy to use. So we already have one, but it's really old. We've had to fix it several times. So this one here will give us the ability to do twice as much patching in two different spots around town, but also take a load off of that old machine. And allow us to keep it there. Yeah. The meter reading software upgrade, we are switching. Our software's got a new version. It's called T-Metra. And what that is, is it's going to help, it's just a new upgrade. So we're kind of moving on. Electric water is going to split that thirty thousand and we're going to implement that in the next, this later. The water system, we have a pretty large water loss. And over the years, we've had guys come through and look for leaks and we found them and we fixed them. And there's just something else that we're missing. And so we wanted to get a fresh set of eyes, professionals who come in and look at everything we do. From meter reading, utility office work, where I'm reading the master meters and I'm turning those reads in. Just stop saying, man, we want somebody to look at the whole process, like are the meters reading correctly? And see if we're missing something, if we're not doing something right. And so that's what that is. Just it's a third party to come in, look at our master meters and look at the process we use and see if there's something we can do better. And make sure that we're doing everything correctly. The ground tank for valve repair, the main valve going into our ground tank is controlled by the level of the ground tank and that's what tells South Stengel to push water to us through our skater system. After about five years of rubbering it works out. So this is just a general maintenance thing. They upgraded that before and it deteriorates so much that we have issues. And once they had it in proactive. So that also could possibly be done here in the next month or two. And then we needed a new utility truck. We, in the water department, we have, I think, a two thousand ten and two thousand twelve or trucks, or utility trucks. So we need to sign up, create and put a new truck in the fleet. That's all I have for the order.
And then with that, we have our yearly increase to pass on that cost from the subsidiary district. We don't want to get behind in that. They increase it every year. So I also want to make sure we continue building that cash reserve for our water. We're still a little behind on that. If there were an emergency, we would not be as healthy as we want to be in that fund. So with that increase, those are the things that go along with that that you'll see. Hopefully, within the next month or two, we hope to get that passed. So either next board meeting or in May is the board meeting we're looking at for the sewer rate increase. And then if Vern wants to come up, talk about his stuff.
Mine's pretty brief. You know, we've done a great job as far as from a police department perspective, when we go to replace the equipment. Something I really pride myself on is try to make sure we get our equipment, keep it as new as possible. Because, you know, we're fortunate, the fact is that everyone has their own take home squad car. But with that, the take home squad car, these guys, take care of them, you know, even better, you know, as being such as their own. Because they know that when you have your own take home squad, they're going to be using it and it's going to be theirs for a minimum of ten years. So, you know, last year or two years ago, we started the fact of, I want to make sure I cycle my equipment out to keep it as new as possible. Keep the miles off of it, keep the, keep the hours off of it. So we've done a good job with that, you know, obviously with the, with the help of the board to appreciate that. So this year we're going to continue with the cycle, working at two new police vehicles this year. That will keep the fleet within the ten year mark is what we like to keep it at, which helps cut down our outside maintenance cost. Excuse me, it's really, this patch should save quite a bit of money without obviously having newer vehicles, less maintenance. So that's one for both. That's one thing we're asking for. And then obviously the cost of outfit the squad cars is not cheap. So there's obviously a cost to that as well. Another thing I'm looking to propose is we were fortunate enough, we ended up buying approximately fourteen shields. When I say shields, bulletproof shields for officers. They're more personalized. When I say they're more personalized, basically it's a smaller shield, a smaller version of a shield, where an officer has instant access to the shield, grab it, put it right, kind of right in front and such. Hopefully we'll never have to have to utilize those, but it's nice to have. The fact is, I can tell you that we are the envy within Stengel Academy when it comes to equipment from the police department. We're very well equipped and obviously thanks to, you know, with the board and such, to be able to provide that, that to the officer for officer safety. So we are asking for additional five shields, which will be allowed me to outfit the rest of the department. And also the gun replacement, they have the industry is basically every five to seven replacements weapons. Our weapons are currently seven years old. And then obviously with technology, the technology side of thing is the fact is with the optics. I'm old school. I still like to see with the old, what I refer to as iron sights. But also with technology and with the optics that are out there and the technology today is that most departments are headed towards that, that, that side of things. More accurate as far as like when we talk about the optics, we're talking about like red dot and such. So that, we are looking to upgrade the, the firearms this, this next year. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thanks, Vern.
Can we talk about the electric?
Yeah, nothing.
We're working on a new contract with the electricians. It's, we sent them our proposal earlier this week and they're going to go over and get back with us. And we're trying to base that off of the contract that we have with the police department. We put in the budget for additional alignment. We've had that alignment in there for a few years since Shane retired. But we're still have hold in that position just in case these guys get tired of overtime. We need to grow our electric facilities. Our substation at, at the main is, is pretty close to being maxed out and the one in Independence is the same way. Now there's room at the independent substation to add another big transformer in there. And that will allow more electricity to be on hand so that if we do have outages, we can switch things around and not take out large portions of town at a time. Also, we get new businesses coming in and we need more electricity to be able to supply to them. We need to be able to have that to go through that transformers and be served out there. So we will be meeting with our consultants to go over and come up with a plan to be able to expand our current substations and look at possibly building future substations. So we'll be meeting sometime this next month to try to get that plan in place and what that kickoff will be. So that'll be us. Meter reading software, all along we've had a system that the overall plan was that they turn around, push a button and read all the meters in town all at one time. It's never worked since the day that we purchased it and that's been seven years. So now my staff has taken it seriously. And Dustin and Jill and the guys in the electric department are all working together with our new IT people and also the people for the meter reading software, figure out why this thing hasn't been working for almost none. They've made great progress in a two week period. And I think with putting this to Metro on there, we'd be very, very close to being able to say that we're probably at eighty five percent of the meters being read all at one time, all on the same day. So we're aiming for that. We need, part of our daily work is locating our utility lines for other people to do work in town. And the locating device that we have has got old and the newer technology pinpoints the line a lot more accurate. So we're going to purchase a new one. It should make it a little bit more accurate on, on pinpoint, pinpointing these lines. And truck wise, we don't need any new trucks, but we could use a couple of those big toolboxes where you can have all the supplies. And if we have an outage, pull up and just open the doors on the trucks and the stuff's right there.
We do have a truck on order that I remember.
That was the one for what, two years ago?
Yeah, so it's still not done yet.
Yeah.
We don't think it'll be complete this year, but it'll probably be next year. It's a big bucket truck.
It's a big bucket truck.
Yes, yeah. That had to be ordered. So I don't think you'll see it this year, but it is in the budget in case it were to come this year. I didn't detail it out because we're really not, don't plan to start paying for that this year.
And with the electric system consulting that we're going to have to do as well as upgrades to our system and to be able to increase our capacity, we need to do an electric rate increase. And we have not done that for what, four years?
Since September twenty twenty one. So definitely our cash is dwindling in there, inflation obviously. And the cost just to cover that and to build up that cash reserve, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the, the increase there. So.
Kayla had looked at surrounding communities on what they charge for electricity. And we were low on what we charge for kilowatt and extremely low on what we charge as a base fee. So we will be looking at that and come up with a plan for you guys to be able to see what kind of increases we're going to get and how much money that'll generate to be able to pay for some of this stuff.
We hope to have that information finalized in the next month as well, along with the sewer rate. So.
When they, when they talk about that, that bigger number of the assessment on like, we were looking at lead times on substation work, just like three plus years, sure is.
Yeah.
And so as we, as we look at where we are now versus where we think we're going to be in four to five years, that's why we're starting that now. We're on the back end of the current bonding that was done on the substation tube. So even at that spot, that timing is starting to line up with a lot of how we got to there. It's already established in our operation and how our rate structure is. Sort of try to take advantage of as one is in the, is the.
The next one to begin.
The next one is.
We have to. If we don't, we'll get lost. I mean, we've already had a couple people that were arrested and doing projects down here, but we can't supply enough electricity to them.
Some of the demand projections that we get from the projects that come into our network.
I know, it's crazy.
Well, we think it'll just keep going up with computers and data, technology, storage facilities.
Even if those into greenhouse.
Yeah.
So. It's time. So, yeah. So in the same vein as what we look at when we did economic development thing, we did comprehensive thing on, you know, where does things go in the village? And we have those pictures in place now. Where you walk down the same line with capacity to generate transmiss, electric support.
So we're going to have one of the engineers from I N E A, our engineers from V H and G, Dave, myself. And I was going to offer it to anyone who uses trustees, if any of you just would like to sit in and, and see what it's like and learn how electric system is put together and the massive numbers to publicize costs. Be more than happy to let you know where those meetings are. So just kind of reach out and let me know. Okay?
Is it different from when I sat in after that one time when the trustees were invited? When was that? Four years ago?
Oh, when I needed it. There, it's a little bit different because when, when I N E A does their presentation, they're talking about how to get from initial configuration all the way to our vision. What we're talking about is once it gets here, how are we able to handle how much is distributed out to every individual location. So. And we are officially a member under, we did get approved. We got approved. So that project was three years, three years. But yeah, sorry. Our substation now certified as a component of the National Electric Distribution Program as they requested us to do.
That's exciting. It's exciting stuff.
It's so long.
Let me know if you'd like to sit in on some of those too.
I got you on that.
The staff has done a great job. I mean, all year long, I can't thank them all enough. They all work on this stuff. They work on it year round. And we've kind of all done that work together as a team. You don't even have to tell them what to do anymore. They just know. They, they start on this, they start on that, they go to the next thing. And then Dustin.
We're doing a lot of suspension.
As all this gets going on, next meeting. As, as Kayla was talking, typically what we try to do, and she's aptly noted, this is the earliest second Tuesday of April we could possibly have. She's ahead of a few days. So typically what we try to do is we try to set all trustees and rates at the same time we pass the budget. Knowing their focus was on getting the budget stuff in there, which is definitely a deadline. The rates changes, they look a lot like our distribution cost changes coming from I N E A on the electric side. The sewer stuff looks a lot like the annual increases that we get. So they're similar, they're in similar percentages is what we're trying to absorb. We haven't done that on the electric side for longer than we should have for. But we saw the storm in the middle of it and changed a lot of stuff we were looking at with electric. So those will be likely a little bit behind unless they can get through it all, get enough time for you to see what they look like and be comfortable with it. Another one that we need to address as we do the budget. We have to affirm as a board that we want to continue the grocery tax portion on it. The governor's member has said. The governor's member has said the state won't collect what was then 100% distributed right back to us. We have to make a move. This is, we would like to continue to have that as part of the budget. So that doesn't change anything that anybody's currently experienced. If we're in that post, we can do that with the same amount because that is a component of this.
If you lose it, you don't pass though. It's not, it's not additional tax. It's money that you'll lose if you don't pass though.
Join, join the masses then.
I mean, I think all personally, every municipality, village, municipality has work plans to pass.
She can't make it without it. So what that is expected, that amount, which is roughly $300,000, that's basically our parks budget. So you're taking away a budget if you.
So you save that one along with the budget?
Yep.
So all of those votes are gonna go on the next meeting?
And where, and where are you going to be? This is usually, this is usually what follows that. I'll call you tomorrow. Is it all going to?
Carrying and then the budget at the same time?
That gets, that gets us in play. We have to, we have to do either or. So in the past, there is a mechanism that we can, we have to take at least one type of budget regardless. There's a mechanism that allows us to adopt our appropriation ordinance so that it's in place by May 1. If we're not adopting that, we have to do a continuance at the same time. The level of detail that Caleb went into, even at this level, is much more granular than what is required in the appropriation ordinances. That's just a list of, here's the top line and it doesn't dictate any specific thing. You know, nothing in the appropriation ordinance we have to pass says you're doing A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. It's just, here's the top line of each one.
You do all that work and it's a one sheet?
It takes a little more than one.
It's a little refined. It's more refined than line by line analysis.
You put double spaces.
It may be more than two, but yeah, but.
And there's, and there's good.
Yeah, but we've tried the past couple of years to get that passed before May 1. That makes it easier on the departments. They can start spending the money. That makes it easier on payroll. We can get all the raises in there so we don't have to do that pay. It's kind of, if, if it works out, that's how I like to do it. But like they said, there are alternatives if we don't feel like we can pass it in the next meeting. So.
We've done that before. It was kind of strange when we got on this pattern.
Yeah.
Whoa, we're really early.
Well, sometimes it would be July and that's hard on these guys who are ready to.
There were union contracts that always throw it off.
Well, that's always tough this year. We had both union contracts. We were talking about rates, but there's a lot that goes into this. So.
Unless she's, unless she's afraid.
That can be, I mean, that can be pushed off without having.
So we may not have those, but what I want to definitely point out that those percentages that we give are limited and, and it is part of what we'll need to get taken care of here in the short order.
It's part of your estimated revenue. You have the increases in budget.
And then I always said the same thing in there is despite the fact that she just showed you a budget that says we're gonna have a $4 million deficit, a large chunk of that stuff is the same expenses that we've been appropriating for decades. And we keep re-appropriating the same number, the likelihood of it and the way that these two actually make the departments operate. It's intentional that we do that. It's kind of the stress test that says, if all this came to fruition, do you have the resources to do it? And our answer is definitely yes, we have the resources to do that. And that's why we budget all that. So should it ever come, we've got it. When the storm shows up, it gives us a little bit of flexibility to work with it while we're handling anything. But that's why that's there. It is intentional. Somebody will point out the fact that the village is, you know, is projecting budget deficit, which we do every single week. And then we point them right back to the other chart that says.
Reproducing actions.
And we execute something different.
And I had one little last slide, a really quick yard mix, recycling and refuse program. That includes just our contracting out the cost for leaf pickup, branch pickup and cleanup stuff that we do over here that we charge that fee for on the utility bills. We, those are the only things I have in there this year. The, we paid off the street sweep work, so we don't have that expense this coming fiscal year. So we're gonna keep using that as far as I know. The cemetery perpetual care fund, I carry this forward every year with the intention that we may need to redo that road or upgrade that road within the cemetery and also a couple other additional projects that have been brought up to potentially do. And then our NFT fund, Jim mentioned about the Palmer Boulevard project. We have expended some of that 757 in this last fiscal year. We have roughly 200,000 left to use with the, with that rebuild Illinois money. And then we've got some NFT money to supplement us to get us through that project for the rest of the year. And that's all I have. Question? You guys feel free to reach out to Pat. I, if you wanna meet with us in the next week, feel free. That is really acceptable.
I always appreciate sitting down with you guys.
Yeah.
But this presentation is very thorough.
We're happy to do it.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So any public properties?
No, maybe next one up. Dust doing great.
Doing great. Still doing fantastic. Thank you, Travis. Any public comments on village business then?
Very none. The next scheduled meeting is May 13th for the committee of the home. And we have no reason for closed session. So I would take a motion to adjourn. She's invited us to make a motion and I have a seconded by a trustee pledging. This meeting is adjourned.
It's a law meeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's the best way to attend a meeting. Walk in, take a picture and it's over.